Welcome to the Mount Clemens City Commission Meeting for Tuesday, January 19th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. We will call the meeting in order. Everyone could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Campbell.
Here.
Fournier.
Here.
Good now.
Here.
Hammond.
Here.
Crapp. Mensah.
I'm here.
Voorhees.
Here.
Thank you. Agenda item four, announcements, acknowledgements, communications, and reports. We will receive and file the department reports. Were there any questions or comments from the commission on the department reports?
I want to thank the city for including the financial report for November. It would be useful to continue to get those on a monthly basis.
I had one correction that I wanted to add, Patrick, for the cable news. It's listed twice that the state of the city address was October 13th, 2020. It was November 13th. A note of clarification. Did anyone else have any questions or comments?
Yes, I do. And I'll ask you, Commissioner Fournier. I was thinking that I would appreciate that financial report in line item detail. What do you think?
Quite a bit of detail there now. Even you, do you want all the individual entries in each account?
Not individual entries, but lined up kind of like how our budget is, with the BSNA lines more clearly defined. It's not a big issue to you.
Yeah, well, maybe we can take a look at it after and just clarify what you mean because it looks similar to what we get at the budget time.
That's what I want, similar to what we get at the budget time. That's line item detail.
Why don't we get together and talk about that after? Now we can clarify that.
Okay.
I thought the report was much improved considering we've never gotten a report like that in the past. So, thank you, City Manager Johnson.
You'll be getting that monthly. And if you'd like to see samples of the other ways it could look, I can send that out tomorrow for that matter.
That would be excellent.
Thank you.
Great. Is there, did anyone have anything else? We'll move on if not. Okay, hearing nothing else, we move on to agenda item five, adoption of the agenda.
Mayor, Mayor Crapp, I'll move that we approve the agenda as printed.
Moved by Commissioner Voorhees.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Fournier. Roll call, please.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Good now.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crapp.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
This is the portion of the meeting where we allow the public to participate. All that we ask is that you give us your full name, your residential address, and that you abide by our three-minute public participation rule. If you would like to get in line, we ask that you give us your first name. We'll create a line for ease of use on Zoom, and then we will call on individuals. If you are interested in speaking during public participation, if you could give me your first name now, that would be great.
There are no members of the public on.
Queue is empty, Mayor.
Thank you. Hearing none, we'll go ahead and move on to number seven, administrative responses to issues or questions raised during previous meetings. City Manager Johnson.
There were none.
Okay, great. Moving on to approval of minutes. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the regular city commission meeting minutes for January 4th, 2021.
Moved by Commissioner Hammond.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Campbell. Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Fournier.
Yes.
Good now.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crapp.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Moving on to agenda item nine, A, first public hearing, CDBG Jones Street Utilities Replacement. Motion, please.
I move to open- Motion to open the public hearing for proposed activity in a floodplain, Jones Street Utilities Replacement, CDBG D012-2A.
Move to open the public hearing by Commissioner Mensah.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Hammond. We, roll call, please.
Good now.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crapp.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Before we open it to public hearing or public comment, sorry, City Manager Johnson, do you want to go ahead and explain?
I'm going to call on Community Development Director Tingley to describe the project. In this case, we are going to have to hold two public hearings. There is no actual action other than opening and closing the public hearing that's going to occur tonight.
Thanks, City Manager Johnson. This project is the utility replacement in Jones Street, adjacent to MacArthur Park. The city was successful in applying for the CDBG funds last spring, and the county is now going through their environmental review process for this project. As part of that, because it's occurring within, a portion of it's occurring within a floodplain, they have some additional steps they're required to undertake, one of which is this two-step public hearing process. The intent is to solicit input from the public on any potential impacts of the floodplain, as well as just a general educational piece. So, like City Manager Johnson said, there'll be a second public hearing in February. And again, this is not to be confused with our normal CDBG public hearing that will be occurring at the next meeting. I believe some commissioners may recall that we did this same process for Shady Side Park, I think back in 2017, when we used some CDBG funds on improvements there. Thank you.
We'll open it to public comment. I don't believe we have, are we still lacking any public?
No one's in the queue here.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Okay, so we'll open it up to Commissioner comments or questions.
All right, I have some questions.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Um, uh, I wanted to know, when is your anticipation that this project would actually start?
Yeah, we don't have a start date, but the project does need to take place this calendar year.
Okay. And do you anticipate any damages or interference to the Jack Prescott Arboretum?
None at all, no.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearings.
Move to close the public hearing for proposed activity in a floodplain, Jones Street Utilities Replacement, CDBG D0-12-2A.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Mensah.
For-
Supported by Commissioner Fournier. Roll call, please.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crapp.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Good now.
Yes.
Agenda nine B, approve Mount Clemens Library Agreement with the Community Center. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to allow the Mount Clemens Public Library to use the Mount Clemens Community Center and the Wilson Gym during the construction at the library, and to direct the administration and city attorney to draft an agreement with the library for the commission's future consideration.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Hammond.
Support.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Fournier, was it?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioner, I'm sorry, City Manager Johnson, do you want to give us the summary of this, please?
As previously reported, the library boards determined that it would be very advantageous to temporarily move the library during construction, and they're requesting our help. A temporary move will allow unimpeded construction work and will save about eight months or more from the construction schedule. This makes the services of the revamped facility available to our residents that much sooner. Although the library is an independent governmental entity, I view it as our library, and I think most of you do as well. And I want to do everything in our power to help make this project go well and be completed as soon as possible. I think that's in the best interest of our residents and our taxpayers, or also the library's taxpayers for the most part. I'm recommending that the city grant the library exclusive use of the Wilson Gym and the non-exclusive use of the community center during the construction period. Wilson will be used for storage only. They'll be putting shelves and stacks of books there. It will not be open to the public. Public library operations will occur in the community center. They will not be able to put at least any significant amount of books at the community center. They'll be basically running and picking up books from Wilson and bringing them back to the community center for people to pick up. The reason is just simply the structure of the community center is not adequate to support stacks of books in the upstairs. And there are water issues in the downstairs. So, the library is well aware of that. The library also is well aware that they will have to share part of the facility with the Jazzercise program, and they are aware that loud music is played during the Jazzercise classes. Both locations are normally used as polling locations, and we do have an election on November 2nd. We also found out after this was written that we also are going to have an election in August. There will be a primary for the state senate seat that's now vacant because our incumbent state senator ran for and was elected to be county prosecutor. The community center will still be able to function as a polling location by closing library operations on election day and the day before. However, it's highly unlikely that there would be adequate room in Wilson Gym for it to function as a polling location. It will be necessary to temporarily move precinct two to an alternate location. The superintendent has already agreed to let us use the high school gym for the November election. I've sent her a request to let us use it for August as well. Lisa's also exploring other options. We will need an agreement with the library board. We're suggesting that a token rent, a dollar rent, but require the library to pick up utility costs during the period they occupy the buildings and to pay for any improvements they require. Also, buildings must be restored to an acceptable condition when they vacate, and any extraordinary cost the city incurs because of moving the polling place should be reimbursed by the library.
Wonderful. Are there any questions or comments by the commission?
Yes. So, I wondered what happened to, on November 16th, we approved a agreement with Advancing McComb for the Y on the Fly program to take place at the Wilson Gym. What happens to that agreement?
We have the ability to cancel that at any time. And they haven't actually used it yet.
Because of COVID.
I know they haven't used it, but, you know, I'm just wondering, so are you saying that we, the intention is to cancel that agreement so that the library can store books there?
Yes.
Thank you. And, um,
I thought you were going to ask- I thought you were going to ask about Sportport, and which we've been doing out of the community center. But the library is also a Sportport location anyway, so they will manage Sportport in the community center during that time.
No, I was good on the, I was good on the community center. I was just concerned about Wilson. Thank you, though. And I am going to say that if it's all possible, it would be really nice if we could keep the voting precinct in Wilson. I understand that it may not be. So, and, thank you.
Just to address the Y on the Fly issue, the Y on the Fly uses the playground. They never used inside the gym. So, I mean, they would still be able to use the playground because they come with their own equipment. They bring vans to the park. They use the park facility, not the actual gym.
But they had actually asked to be able to use the indoor facility, too.
Right, so, but we couldn't modify. We don't necessarily have to kick them out of the park.
No, they could certainly use the outdoor areas.
Yeah, I wasn't asking about the outdoor areas because our agreement, you know, with the library won't affect that, but, you know, we had a specific agreement for the Y on the Fly inside the Wilson Gymnasium, and that's what I was looking at. I have the package in front of me if you want me to read it, but I don't think we need to.
I don't think anyone's calling into question that we did that. I'm just saying that they haven't used it, and we can, they can, I think they can cohabitate. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please. Roll call, please.
Crapp.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Good now.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Agenda item nine C, approve fire chief agreement. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor Crapp, I move that we approve the contract with Greg Shipman for the services as fire chief for the city of Mount Clemens.
Moved by Commissioner Fournier, supported by Commissioner Mensah. Is there any questions or comments? Oh, sorry, why don't we have Mr. Johnson give us a summary first?
Well, first, let me remind you that, to me, I think it was two meetings ago, you approved my appointment of Greg Shipman as fire chief, and at that time, I stated that the contract would be coming to you at a future meeting, and this is a future meeting. You have the contract before you. This is a contract that the city attorney drafted based on a contract the city had with former city manager Doug Anderson. The, pretty much most of the terms and conditions here are right out of that agreement. The amount is $85,000 per year. That was basically to provide a salary comparable to the top-level department heads, plus pick up some of his extra costs that he'll have for being a contractor as opposed to an employee, such as he'll have to pick up his own social security tax.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
I look forward to this change in the fire department to have a strong, skilled, loyal, and dedicated leader. I think it's going to be a good thing for the fire department and a good thing for the city.
Three. Okay, sorry, are you catching the background noise? Sorry about the noise. Okay, anyone else have any questions or comments?
One thing I'd like to add, and I don't have the date in front of me, but I sent you a notice of the swearing-in ceremony that we already had scheduled for some new fire officers. Chief Shipman will be swearing in at the same time if this contract is approved.
So, February 5th, Mr. Johnson?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, it's actually right there, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Okay, roll call, please.
Mensah.
Absolutely.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Good now.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crapp.
Yes.
Moving on to agenda item nine D, approve the hazard time proposal. I will entertain a motion.
I move the administration is authorized to offer 16 hours of additional time off to full-time employees in recognition of the hazards they face performing their jobs during the pandemic. Such time off will be administered as outlined in the memorandum.
Supported by Commissioner Hammond, supported by Commissioner Fournier. Mr. Johnson, would you like to explain the proposal for us?
Thank you. City Commission previously considered a hazard pay proposal and decided to offer it only to firefighters and transit employees who we felt had the most direct exposure to possible carriers of the virus. Some members of the commission have wanted to offer a much, this, wanted to offer another hazard pay program to other full-time employees or to all full-time employees, but at a smaller level. We'd like to propose an alternative approach to hazard compensation. Instead of additional cash, we propose additional time off. Specifically, we propose granting 16 hours of additional time off to all full-time employees in recognition of their extraordinary efforts and exposure to hazards during the pandemic. This provides a very real benefit to the employees, but does not require cash outlay from the city. No, we're not suggesting that it doesn't cost us anything. It does. It just doesn't require cash. Giving employees time off means less work will get done, and that's a real cost, too. Nevertheless, I think this is the right thing to do. To keep this from costing us money, we're proposing some rules. First, we're going to propose to do this as additional personal business time. These hours will expire if not used by 6:30 of 2022. They cannot be converted to cash even upon retirement, and they cannot be used at any time when doing so would necessitate calling in a replacement at an overtime rate. And we do need to negotiate letters of understandings with each of the bargaining units because this is a change in their contractual terms.
Does anyone have questions?
Sure, if there is a delay, since this is already into the middle of January, if there is a delay in bargaining this with the unions, I would suggest that we extend the timeframe that these, you know, that they can use this. Because I think in some of the areas like, you know, water sewer, and of course, the DPS where they're really shorthanded, it, everyone might not have an opportunity to use their two days.
It's 2022, not 21.
Oh, okay, then we're good.
And I want to thank City Manager Johnson for this alternative approach. I think it's excellent. We do want to recognize these people, and it, yeah, we do have to be fiscally responsible, so thank you very much for this idea.
City Manager Johnson, I think that when you said, you know, we value people and we value their time, I think that it really, this speaks to that. And I hope that, you know, employees see the true meaning of that, that this is, we hope that they get to spend those two days or 16 hours, you know, with their family or doing something that they enjoy because we do value them and we value their time. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Good now.
No.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crapp.
Yes.
Mensah.
No.
Moving on to agenda item nine E, approval of purchases and payments of invoices.
Move to approve purchases and payment of invoices as presented.
Moved by Commissioner Campbell.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Hammond. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Uh, yes, I have some comments on the firewall.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, I went and I talked to some people about the firewall. There is a website called eSecurityPlanet.com. I looked up this firewall, and it said that this is a good firewall, that it blocks 93.5% of attacks, but was ineffective against nine of 180 evasion techniques. It said the value was good. It said the implementation was very good. The management of it was very good. The support was good. All complaints centered around responsiveness of the cloud features. But otherwise, this is a company centered in the UK, but otherwise, this is a decent, solid firewall.
Mr. Johnson, this was a firewall that was also recommended by High Tech, correct?
Yes, this is the one High Tech recommended and one that they're able to support.
Which is our IT contractor, correct?
Yes.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Good now.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crapp.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Agenda item 10, consent agenda. I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve consent agenda as presented.
Moved by Commissioner Campbell.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Goodenough. Roll call, please.
Fournier.
Yes.
Good now.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crapp.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Okay, agenda item 11, city manager's report. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. Start with, I'm going to abbreviate the COVID report to take it down to, the McComb County Health Department is providing COVID-19 vaccinations to residents over age of 65, paramedic, CMS workers, home health and hospice workers, other healthcare workers with direct in direct contact with patients, school employees, law enforcement corrections officers, workers in childcare institutions, adult child protective service services, homeless shelters, and municipal employees. Those are the only groups that are eligible for the vaccine at this time. The number to call to make an appointment is 586-463-8777. You need to call Monday through Friday between 8:30 and 5:00. However, the vaccine is in very short supply, and the Health Department is receiving many, many more calls than they can handle at the moment. I've tried making, calling that number on several occasions. I have yet to be able to get through. So, people need to be patient. It's going to take a little while. The vaccine supply has been coming into the county. Last I heard, basically, one tray at a time. The tray has, I believe, 950 doses on it. So, it's going to take a while even before they can get through this first group of eligible individuals before they'll be able to open it to everybody. Branding project, the city received 24 proposals for branding services, and those are currently being reviewed by the committee. Arena mod, standard and for is upgraded the city's mod rating from A+ to AA-. This upgrade will save the city, the number we were given was $70,000, $75,000 in interest cost, and it's also going to save us $20,000 to $30,000 in the cost of bond insurance. and it's also going to save us twenty to thirty thousand dollars in the cost of bond insurance if we're not going to buy it. It's still, if you read the
Seven thirty.
If you read the preliminary official statement, it's still available as an option to the bond buyer if they wish to insure the bonds, but we're not going to be doing that automatically, and we're not going to be paying for it. Housing commission, I've appointed Dr. David McFadden to the Mount Clemens Housing Commission, the chiropractor and lifelong resident, and a member of the Board of Education. Comments about the November revenue expenditure report were pretty much already made at the beginning of this agenda by commissioners, and we have future agendas for the next couple of meetings listed below. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, this is the second public participation. Patrick, do we have any public on the line?
One is on the queue, ma'am.
I have some questions about city manager's report.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
That's all right. I would like to know who's on the committee for the branding services.
Oh, that was in the last agenda. It's Brandon Bowman from the library, Phil Gilcrest from the Anton Art Center, Maria, what's Maria's last name?
Sardine.
Yeah, from the county Economic Development Office, Brian Tingley, Nikki Ratusnick, and me.
Okay, and and I'll tell you a little bit, a bit of an update about the COVID vaccines. The county finds out on Mondays how many they're actually going to get. The week before last, we were supposed to get five thousand. We only got thirty-five, thirty-eight hundred. The same thing happened this week. So you're, i- if you're going to try and call, try and call on Tuesday morning as, you know, close to eight thirty as you can. More vaccines will be coming in every week. That's what we've been, you know, told, you know, in in the county. So you just have to, you know, like you said, just be patient and and make the phone call. It works better from everything that I've heard to actually use the phone number than it is to try and go online and use the online appointment tip, you know, thing at the, on the website. So just make the calls, you know, every Tuesday at eight thirty as as best you can. They've also found that sometimes spots open up a little bit after that because people start giving up and get and getting out of the queue because they've called, you know, twenty-seven times. So that's just a little hint for that on you. And that's, that's the only questions I have.
Okay, Patrick, we still have no one in public participation or no one from the public?
Correct, no one's on the call.
Okay, great. Okay, so then we will move past public participation since we don't hear any, and we will go ahead and go on to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Voorhees?
Yes, I would first of all like to extend my appreciation to Commissioner Mensner who alerted me to the vaccine at times and the phone number, and my mother-in-law and I went last Thursday and got our first shot. So, so I appreciate it, Denise. You did a great job. And I must say that the county did an excellent job of of filing, you know, people through the lines and whatnot. It went very, very smoothly. The only hangup, I think, and they may have cured it now, is to get the appointment for the second dose. But I do believe that Denise told me that they've they've worked on that. Also, I'm I'm very happy that we now have a fire chief, and I'm also very pleased that with the move from Greg becoming chief, that opens up captain and lieutenants, and we've got some great appointments there. With that, once a clement, always a clement.
Thank you. Mr. Menser?
Uh, I know that I said that that I was going to approve. I told city manager Johnson I would agree to and approve the personal days for our employees. But then I took a look at the CARES funding sub-recipient agreement in the consent agenda, item number ten B, and see that we're going to get two hundred and seven thousand dollars. I think a cash payment is is actually called for because we've gotten a hundred and ninety-six thousand. We got a hundred and seventy thousand for a total of almost five hundred and seventy-five thousand. I think we can give our people some money. I also want to say kind of goodbye to a a member of our community, Karen Upshaw. She is related to Commissioner Goodenough. I worked with Karen for twelve years at the county library. She was always a great worker. She was a cheerful worker. She always left you with a smile and a wave. She was so very excited. She just got a Habitat for Humanity house, and she was so pleased and thrilled of all of the skills she learned working on that house. This was a very quick and sudden thing. Those of you may, some of you may remember that her father is Bonner Upshaw. He was one of Mount Clemens' most infamous and famous police officers. Her, his, her mother was Dorothy Upshaw. Dorothy was a long-term library board member and held several political, you know, positions and several, you know, group positions, committee positions for the county, for her church, for various political groups. Karen has a, you know, spent her entire life here, and she will be missed. And my sympathies go to Commissioner Goodenough. Thank you.
Um, I'd like to point a clarification. Mr. Johnson? The agreement that we just signed with the county for the two hundred thousand dollars for, and some change, was the original money that we got from the CARES funding, correct? That is not an additional two hundred thousand dollars?
No, you're correct. It's 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 previously reported monies.
So we've received, that's a total we've received in CARES funding.
That's, yeah, this is, this is just getting some paperwork done.
And also, I would like it known that we didn't receive an October revenue sharing funding and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the state of Michigan, correct?
August.
August. So, basically, we are only up by fifty thousand dollars essentially, and that we did incur some costs from COVID. So, we are not in the, in the black five hundred thousand dollars, correct, Mr. Johnson?
That's correct. And none of, none of the grants that have been approved yet deal with revenue losses, and that's where I expect to see the biggest hit from COVID.
But we haven't, you haven't even begun to see that, correct?
No.
But to be clear, we have not been given five hundred thousand dollars in CARES funding.
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Hammond?
Thank you. Good evening. Um, I'm glad that the city commission and the city manager was able to come up with compensation plan for the city employees. I want to thank all the city employees for their hard work and their dedication. And also, today I was able to get the first dose of vaccine, and I was successful with getting my first dose by scheduling my appointment online. It did take me some time to get my appointment, but I was able to schedule it online, so I encourage everyone to try both the online option to schedule your appointment for your vaccine and also the telephone line. Because together, we all want to get rid of COVID and spread some hope and move on with our lives. So that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell?
Yes, I too want to thank the administration for getting Captain Shipman as our new fire chief. So congratulations to him. Regarding Karen Upshaw, I've known her for over thirty years. When I left the county on January twenty-third, nineteen ninety-six, as a clerk driver, Karen Upshaw took over my position, and she did that ultimately moving up to the register of deeds office. So I too will miss her. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fournier?
Or Commissioner Fournier?
Okay, again, my congratulations to Captain Shipman. I am so pleased that this is taken care of, and I think we have an amazing person to fulfill this position. I, my sympathies to Commissioner Goodenough on the loss of her cousin, and I did not know her personally, but she sounds like a wonderful person. And again, I am very, very appreciative of all of our city employees and wish that we had unlimited funds to do what we could do with, but I hope this is a indication or at least a, you see that we are very grateful for all you do. And again, thank you, city manager Johnson, for this idea. That, good night, everyone. Have a good couple of weeks.
Great. Uh, Commissioner?
Um, I just wanted to say thank you to the commissioners who spoke about my cousin. It is going to be very hard to navigate through this one. It was very unexpected, like Commissioner, Commissioner Menser said, and Commissioner Campbell. Karen and I grew up together. I will not be attending the service or the wake because I just can't handle it. So I do appreciate your thoughts and your prayers for our family. And so I'll just leave it at that. You guys have a blessed night and be safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I too wish to express your condolences. I did not know Commissioner Goodenough's cousin, Karen, but I can, from the outpouring of good wishes to your family on Facebook and and throughout the community, obviously, she made an impact in our community. I'd like to thank the commission for what they were able to pass tonight for city employees. We have so many city employees who work hard within, you know, the entire city, and just the four walls of city hall, but all, but all of the city, and I, I am glad that we were able to show our appreciation to them. And I don't think that just money, I mean, I think that, I think that showing people in ways that show how you value them goes a long way. And so, and time is, I think, from this COVID experience, to time with your family and time doing what you love is something that we all value, I think even more now. Um, I'd like to thank all the employees that worked on MLK Day and thank TCP Mentoring for inviting me to be part of their day of service. I know Commissioner Goodenough was also there, and we were able to deliver meals to the employees that did get to work, that did have to work for MLK Day, and so it was really a great experience that they let us work with their mentee students and deliver those meals, and that was, that was a really nice opportunity. So I thank you for that invitation. I look forward to February fifth, when we get to swear in a new fire chief and then give the promotions to our firefighters who have earned those, and it's, it'll be another good day in Mount Clemens. I also look forward to several new businesses working, businesses opening up in the next few months and hope that February first is something that we all can look forward to, all of our restaurants opening in Mount Clemens. If you have an opportunity, we support them in the next few weeks by ordering carryout so that we can make sure that we keep the restaurants here in our, in our great city. So, I'd like to close by offering a few words by Martin Luther King Jr. as we remember him this week. "We must develop and maintain the capacity to forgive. He who is devoid of the power to forgive is devoid of the power to love. There is some good in the worst of us and some evil in the best of us. When we discover this, we are less prone to hate our enemies. I have decided to stick with love. Hate is too great a burden to bear." Martin Luther King Jr. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mayor Crop, I move that we adjourn.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Voorhees, supported by Commissioner Campbell. Roll call please.
Goodnow?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Crap?
Yes.
Menser?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great, have a great night, and we appreciate your time today.